Good evening, welcome to the February 6, 2019 Agenda for Combined Meeting. Roll call please, Mr. Mustarow.
Ms. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Fioki?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Jennings?
Present.
Mr. Medio?
Here.
Mr. Sabrana?
Free.
Ms. Spinelli?
Here.
Mr. Ulrich?
Present.
Mr. English?
Here. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Violin Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time and place thereof, agenda, etc., the Daily Journal, SNJ Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Nuextra, Comunidad, Vista Bueno, the Clerk of the City of Violin, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. At this time, rise for the flag salute.
We have one person here now.
We can do it again.
We'll do it again.
Yes.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask that we pause for a moment of silence for Daniel Spatterfer, who passed away, former employee of the district and 25-year retired police officer.
Thank you.
Do we have a resolution for executive session this evening?
Yes, we do.
Do I have a motion?
Who first? I was asking who. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the City of Violin School District will convene into executive session on Wednesday, February 6, 2019, for the following reasons, as outlined in NJSA 10:4-12. Discussion is VEA negotiations update, Oak in Maine, Max Leuchter, and 17 West Landis Avenue properties, and any matters falling within the attorney-client privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise his ethical duties as a lawyer.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Set. Roll call please, Mr. Mustarow.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
We'll be back. Okay, we're back. At this time, Veteran Memorial School students will be leading us in the flag salute, so please come to the front. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some certificates for you. Ms. Sabrana, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ladies. We appreciate it. And thank you to your families for bringing you here this evening.
Dr. Grucci, do we have special presentations this evening?
We do. We have several. I'd like to start by calling Mrs. Nancy Hollenweger, our Curriculum Supervisor, forward, and she's going to be acknowledging our Poetry Out Loud winners.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Nancy Hollenweger, the Supervisor of Lander, and I am section two, late on behalf of Mrs. Vanessa Rasmussen, who is a neighborhood teacher at the Parkland Care at Vine High School South, and she is the Coordinator for the Poetry Out Loud program at Vine High School. I would like to share her partnership this evening. She says, "Thank you so much for honoring Jeremy Rasmussen and James Pugio, who demonstrated exceptional poetry recitation skill and acumen. Poetry Out Loud is a national poetry recitation competition that encourages students to explore poetry through memorization and performance. The VHS competition includes all four of its juniors and seniors, involving a various level of number of course. Students competed over two rounds with the title of school champions, Jeremy and James, with two winners for our school-wide Poetry Out Loud competition. The competition was fierce this year and had ten excellent recitations for the students. We would like to thank the judges, Mrs. Warren Novella, Supervisor of that class, who served as the tally judge, Ms. Lindsay Tisch, who served as the accuracy judge, Ms. Kim Novella, Mr. John McLean, and Mrs. Noel Patel, who are judges, and Mrs. Jennifer Lanning, who is our District Literacy Coach, who served as our prompter. The students had, I'm sorry, the judges performed the difficult task of using the Poetry Out Loud rubric to score the student by the rubric emphasizing themes such as physical presence, voyage, and articulation, dramatic appropriateness, evidence of understanding, and overall performance. So thank you again for honoring James and Jeremy this evening for supporting Poetry Out Loud and for supporting the Poetry Out Loud field trip to the regional finals on February 21st. This event provides students with excellent opportunity for educational experience, but also gives them the opportunity to see how successful Vine High School students are in pending. At this time, Jeremy and James would each like to recite one of their poetry.
Cartoon Physics Part One by Nick Flynn. Children under, say, 10 shouldn't know that the universe is ever-expanding, inexorably pushing into the vacuum, galaxies swallowed by galaxies, whole solar systems collapsing, all of it acted out in silence. At 10, we are still learning the rules of cartoon animation, that if a man draws a door on a rock, only he can pass through it. Anyone else who tries will crash into the rock. 10-year-olds just stick with burning houses, car wrecks, ships going down, earthbound tangible disasters. Arenas where they can be heroes. You can run back into a burning house, sinking ships have lifeboats, the trucks will come with their ladders. If you jump, you will be saved. A child places her hand on the roof of a school bus and drives across a city of sand. She will know the exact spot it will skid, at which point the bridge will give, who will swim to safety, and who will be pulled under by sharks. She will learn that if a man runs off the edge of a cliff, he will not fall, until he notices his mistake. Thank you.
Watching the Perseus by Isabel Rogers. The parrot, Einstein of birds, who can count and reason calmly in our tongue while outliving us, disdains the ostrich. For all its sprint records, the ostrich will be remembered for hiding from the truth. You cannot run stupid. We, the people, hold some truths to be self-evident. Our magnificent brain trapped in a body that can't feel, can't smell fear, can't hear death, can't see straight. Even so, our retinas with raz and cones, as intricate as any telescope array, evolved to see a predator slide out of oblique shadow and give us time to bolt. We survey our closed dominion until we look up in August to find comet dust flaring in the night. This vastness, this vertiginous awareness mocking gravity on our speck of now wakes us with a recalibrating jolt. But soon, our familiar star will claw toward us in seven league routes from the east, drawing its valium thread across our planet as if to cloak a birdcage, to muffle questions that blink through dark matter and would pour over us until we drowned dreaming of amnesia.
Thank you, James and Jeremy, and congratulations. We have certificates for you. I'd like to ask Natalie Reynolds, our Violin High Librarian, if she would please come forward to recognize our bookmark winners.
Good evening. I'm Natalie Reynolds, the Violin High School South Librarian. This was our second year having the students design their own bookmark. It was a contest we held, and several students entered the contest. They had to create a bookmark that reflected the themes of winter and reading, and they did a great job. It gave them a chance to express their creativity, and we have so many talented students at VHS, talented artists. And of course, we're promoting reading and literacy in libraries. So tonight, we have our top three winners with us tonight. And third place, we have Cassidy Lehman. Second place, Elizabeth Baranovaskaya. And first place, Jacob Vasquez. And we also have copies of all their bookmarks that were printed up by our LifeSkill students. So we have copies for you guys if you would like to see them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are they here today?
Yes, they're all here.
Oh, good. Come up front, please.
Here comes Jacob, Cassidy, and Elizabeth.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Each bookmark is really beautiful, and we congratulate you. Next, I'd like to ask Dr. Nagrin if she would please come forward, our World Language Supervisor, and she is going to acknowledge one of our students who is a Fulbright winner.
Please, slight correction, it's a staff member, but that's all right. Tonight, I get to come up and do what I love doing up here, which is to talk about the great things that our language learner students and staff are up to. And tonight, it is a staff member that we have. So I would like to introduce to you Mr. Marquis Strickland. Mr. Strickland is a fifth-grade bilingual teacher at Sabater, and in his spare time, he is a chaplain in the National Guard. He's an underachiever. This Fulbright Award is going to allow Mr. Strickland to spend five weeks this summer studying language and culturally relevant pedagogy in Oaxaca, Mexico. In addition to polishing his already fluent Spanish, Mr. Strickland plans to learn Zapotec, an indigenous language spoken by many of our Violin community members. A large portion of Violin's immigrant community hails from Oaxaca, Mexico, making Mr. Strickland's fellowship extremely relevant to the functioning of our school district and to improving relations between the district and all the communities we serve. This is the second year in a row that a Violin public schools teacher has won this honor. Congratulations, Mr. Strickland. Why not?
Congratulations. That's wonderful news. Next, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Shelley Schneider from Cumberland County College, and she is here with Dr. Robert Clark, and they're going to be filling us in regarding the merger.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for inviting us, and there are a lot of questions out in the community, and hopefully, we'll be able to answer all of your questions tonight. I'd like to introduce Dr. Clark. Bob Clark has been a faculty member and professor for over 25 years. He actually was a past recipient of New Jersey Professor of the Year. Currently, Dr. Clark is the Executive Director of our Institutional Research Department, as well as our merger liaison, and he has put a lot of time into looking into what the needs are of our college and how we would better serve our students in our college and our community. And this is especially important here as you prepare the students to go into the next phase of their lives. So at this time, I'm going to bring up Dr. Bob Clark.
Okay, we apologize for the delay. Mr. Fran Japony will move forward with a HIB presentation, and in the meantime, we'll get this computer set up.
All right, I'll just use that slide. All right, so every year, we have to go through, twice a year, we have to go through this, and good evening, everyone. So I want to go over the whole, the HIB, where we are and what's happening, and I have, I always like to bring one case that was just decided by the commissioner, and it gives a little insight about, about the HIB and how, how they work. Currently, the definition of a HIB is, could be any gesture, anything that's written, whether it's electronic, or anything that's said to a student once or, or over and over again. One of the things about the HIB, they're only for students, they're not for adults. And it's really based on a characteristic. For a HIB to be, it must be motivated, and it must be motivated by the person who's committing the act, and there has to be a characteristic of the victim, such as race, color, religion, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, any distinguishing characteristic. And that's, that's a wide open area, because it could be a perceived characteristic. It also can happen just about any place, on school property, off the school property, at night, and of course, with social media, there's, there's always that opportunity to happen electronically. It also has to disrupt the school, has to disrupt the person, has an effect that they can't come to school, or they're emotionally upset, and it could be both physical or emotional. It also must disrupt that person's life, or if a student comes to school and can't take a test for some reason because they're so upset about what happened. So they're the kinds of things that describe, describe a HIB, what it has to do. And the two important pieces are the motivation and the characteristics. And I listed these characteristics, again, a child in special education, someone who wears glasses, a child coming from a non-traditional family, someone who's overweight, a physically weak student, poor athletic ability, any type of stereotype. So there's a lot of things that could be perceived or a characteristic that you can see or not see. This is an interesting case. It just came out. It's from Huntington Valley Central Regional High School. And why this one was interesting, because it was unfounded, and it was against the baseball coach. It was brought by the parent of one of the players, and the parent's claim was that the baseball coach had directed the coaches by teasing, name-calling, insulting, or demeaning comments towards the student athletes. The district interviewed all 23 players and the coaches, and they found that the coaches do get in the faces of the players. They do bench students when they lack hustle, and they even ridicule students when they're tending to their injuries. But the board, and the commissioner, and the administrative law judge, found that this was not a HIB, because even though there was characteristics, there was no motivation. In other words, the, the coach did not single out any one of the individuals for something, a characteristic within themselves. So he didn't single out a student who may have a stutter or something along those lines. It was just, they were just, you know, trying to motivate the students to play, they're athletes. The parent's claim was that there was a characteristic, being a student. The, the judge and the administrative, I'm sorry, the administrative law judge and the commissioner said, "No, being a student is universal." The parent also claimed that a white, healthy male student athlete was also a characteristic, and the court also, again, said, "No," and the commissioner agreed. And the parent also said, "Students are meek and weak," and again, they didn't agree with that. And the HIB was unfounded. And this is an interesting case, because at times, I'll get a call from a parent saying that their child's been bullied by the teacher, and, and they'll say that, "My child has anxiety," or AHD, I'm sorry, ADHD. And the teacher may just be saying, you know, "You missed an assignment, your work wasn't turned in on time," or for whatever reason. That's not, they're not attacking their, their disability, they're just saying, "You missed this," and that can be taken as bullying. Each case has its own merit, of course, but the way this one came out is, is a good reference point for us, because all these HIBs are subjective. And when the principals, and they turn it into the superintendent, we have to look at that to see exactly how they came to that determination. So I thought this was an interesting case because of the nature of it and that it was, that it was unfounded. So I thought, that's in your PowerPoint, the whole, all the details, I gave you the real short version of it. I want to go over the numbers, and you're going to see a drop in our numbers this, this year. For the past seven months, we had 41 HIBs reported, 17 were substantiated, 24 were unsubstantiated. The numbers basically dropped across the state for one, one reason, the change in the law. Back in July 1, there was a change to the, to the HIB law, and that was due, one of the things now, that principals, with the evidence that's presented to them, they can determine whether they have to do an investigation or not. So now, schools, just because someone says it's bullying, once they look at the evidence, they don't have to start the investigation. So numbers across the state have dropped dramatically. It doesn't mean they're not going to take action. Nine times out of 10, it's a conflict between students, and it turns out, it is a conflict. That's why you see all the unsubstantiated ones. They were dealt with, but it was a conflict between students. So when the facts are presented, and it looks like it's just a conflict, the principal doesn't have to initiate the, the HIB report. However, if the evidence should change, then of course, they would do the, the HIB report. So right now, we've had, for the past seven months, we had 17 that were substantiated. And do you have any questions about our report? Thank you. You got it? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Fran Japony.
Thank you.
Dr. Clark, I think we're ready to roll.
Well, no, in just a moment. Other than that, we could watch The Grinch. And there we are. Good. And thank you for your patience. Thank you for your patience. We're here to, to speak, Dr. Schneider and I are here this evening to speak about the murder, the merger consideration update, the merger being that under consideration now by Cumberland County College. The question that would first come up is, why merge? And that has to do with the fact that higher education is undergoing a seismic shift at this time, and that's something that will affect all of the young people in the room, the students at this high school. It's something they need to be aware of as they're making their decisions. This contraction across most of the sectors of higher ed, increased government scrutiny, shrinking student demographic, there are simply fewer students in the college-bound pipeline than there was when the boomers were coming through, decreased funding levels, and that's leading to increased competition among colleges for the shrinking demographic of students. The rate of change is accelerating. In the future of our higher ed institutions nationwide is in jeopardy. If we look at enrollment at the community colleges here in New Jersey over the past, well, the, the years from 2012 to 2016, if we look at how the headcount, the number of students in the institutions has changed, this axis, you can't quite see it there, can you? But that's the zero axis. All the lines to the left of it are decreases in student population, some of them approaching 40%. Only one of the 19 community colleges increased in enrollment during that time. That's Rowan College of Gloucester County. All the rest in the state decreased. And if we look at what's projected nationwide in the coming years, we're expecting a major falloff in enrollment in colleges nationwide, starting in 2026. And we could go into the reasons for that, but it would take more time than we have this evening. But I'd be happy to answer questions on that at another time, if any of you have such questions. The mission of Cumberland County College must survive. We know the challenges the people in our county face, the families in our county face. The only way we're going to solve those is by increased education levels. The college has been serving that mission for more than a half-century now. It must continue. But if we're to survive these coming years, we either must become better at competing or better at collaborating. And collaborating is the path we've chosen, and in doing so, we looked at our neighboring institutions, those institutions in South Jersey, to consider partnering with them. You may recall, several years ago, premier partnerships were available from universities to community colleges. Rowan College of Gloucester County resulted from that. None of the universities are currently interested in premier partnerships. We did, however, sign an enhanced articulation agreement with Stockton University that provides great advantages to the students of this county, the students of this high school, if they want to pursue an education at Stockton. We have the ability to help you on that pathway through conditional dual admission, program-to-program articulation, things that will make it possible for you to go to school at Cumberland and pursue a degree at Stockton University. But it's not a premier partnership, and that's what we really need. Only Rowan College of Gloucester County expressed interest in a deeper partnership with Cumberland, and that's because they see the same challenges coming we see. We have very similar missions. The mission we fill, the mission they fill, very similar. So it makes sense to join these institutions. Merger will bring benefits to both institutions and to the students of both counties. It will make both institutions more robust. And just as an example, if you look at the size of the student body of the 19 community colleges in New Jersey, there's Cumberland in red, way over on the left, there's RCGC. This is where we will be if we merge, in a much better This is where we will be if we merge, in a much better position to compete for students, to compete for funding, to compete for grants, to bring the students of Cumberland County and Gloucester County as well, what they need. But it also brings a premier partnership with Rowan University to Cumberland County. This is a list of the advantages that brings, but I'm not going to go through the whole list, I'm just going to point out a couple of them for you. One is an affordable baccalaureate degree. Through a program called three plus one, you'll be able to attend Rowan College of South Jersey, that's what the joined institution will be called, for three years, right here at Cumberland or up the road at the Gloucester County campus. The university for one year and earn your bachelor's degree for less than $30,000. That's a savings of approximately 45%. And if you look at what many universities in the region charge per year, you realize this is actually quite a bargain. And if your goal is, if the student's goal is to live on the university campus, that's also available to the students of Cumberland or Gloucester County post-merger through a program called Rowan Choice, where they can live on Rowan University's campus, they can attend the community colleges, they can have all the advantages of the university except inter-university sports and Greek life, fraternity or sorority, and they'll save 30% over what it would cost them going directly to the university. We're also ideally suited for an eds and meds corridor. If you look at the north end of Route 55, we have Rowan University, Gloucester County College, and the new hospital being built at 322. And if you look at our end, you have Cumberland County's campus and Regional Medical Center. Rowan University School of Osteopathic Medicine is getting involved in this merger by collaboration with Rowan College of Gloucester County and ultimately Cumberland County, where we will have the advantages of having them on our campus. Rowan University will also come to the university center. As you may know, you can already earn bachelor's degrees or master's degrees from four different universities right on Cumberland's campus in the university center. Rowan University will bring their programs to our university center, some of which will be three plus one, as I mentioned, three years, community college tuition, one year university tuition, and you'll have your baccalaureate degree. You will still have the advantage of the other institutions we partner with. We'll have the premier partnership with Rowan University, enhanced articulation, as I mentioned, with Stockton, our other university partners, as well as those that are currently partnered with our CGC, and our myriad of articulation agreements. This is the timeline, this is where we are on the timeline, we're targeting July 1st as the merger date. If all goes as anticipated, Rowan College of Gloucester County and Cumberland County College will merge on July 1st, becoming Rowan College of South Jersey. From the standpoint of our students, if we look at where they've graduated from over the last 10 years, after they graduate from Cumberland, where they've gone on to earn bachelor's degrees and beyond, there are more than 70 universities in the list. This represents some of them. They will continue to do that because our goal is to maximize choices and opportunities for the students of this county. It's to maximize those choices on campus, through collaborations, and as a larger merged institution, making this college robust so that it can offer programs and services that we could not offer as an independent institution. That's what I have for you this evening. I appreciate the time to speak with you about what we're doing at the college. And if you have questions, feel free to reach out to either Dr. Schneider or myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
So I guess our guidance council is here. Is that it for our special presentations? At this time, do I have a motion for the approval, minutes January 9th, 2019, Executive 7, January 9th, 2019, combined meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
I'm going to abstain from the January 9th meeting. And yes to, I'm sorry, and yes to the other.
Thank you. Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Do we have any comments from our board solicitors this evening?
None.
Do we have any comment from the public on agenda items? Seeing none, Dr. Grucci, motions, resolutions?
Okay. I'd like to recommend discussion of personnel items 1.1, retirements, resignations, terminations, lease of absence, employment transfers, students, substitutes, extracurricular activities, and volunteers. But I am also like to mention that I am pooling 1.1D, which are employee numbers 12839 and 5390.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend discussion regarding the employment contract for school business administrator slash board secretary, Mr. Gene Merkley, from March 15th, 2019 through June 30th, 2019, in accordance with NJSA 18A:7-8J. The contract was approved by the interim executive county superintendent of schools on January 24th, 2019, and it is on file with the Vinland Board of Education office.
Do we have any questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend approval of personnel items 1.1 through 1.2, with the exception of item 1.1D, which I mentioned prior.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend discussion of trips and district travel, as well as the spring schedule.
Any questions? Comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding an update on the memorandum of agreement with the JROTC effective July 2019.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend approval of 2.1 through 2.2.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a resolution declaring that Max Leiter School is no longer needed for school purposes and authorizing and directing the superintendent to apply for permission to sell the Max Leiter School property.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend discussion regarding a resolution authorizing solicitation of sealed bids for the purchase of Max Leiter School property, not needed for school purposes, at a minimum price of $550,000.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend discussion regarding a boundary line agreement with the city of Vinland to fix the boundary line between city property and district property at Oak and Main Roads.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a resolution authorizing solicitation of sealed bids for the purchase of Oak and Main School, not needed for school purpose, at a minimum price of $500,000.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend approval of 3.1 through 3.4.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Ms. Sabrana?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
I would like to recommend discussion of budgetary transfers for our general school base and ECPA budgets for December 2018.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend discussion of the board secretary and treasurer reports for December 2018.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the submission of the following grant applications. Field trip New Jersey grant for 2018-19 for Vinland High School and the maximum amount of $700. For 2018-19 teacher mini-grant program for Vinland High School and the maximum amount of $500. And the fiscal year 2019 Individual with Disabilities Education Act Amendment to the New Jersey Department of Education, which includes the carryover funds from the fiscal year 2018, July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019. Basic allocation is $3,5,702. Preschool allocation, $137,939.
Questions or comments?
I have a quick comment.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone who has taken the time out to write for these grants, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the 21st Century Community Learning Center addendums to the contract for Wallace Middle School and from January 1, 2019 to September 31, 2019, in the amount of $4,000. And the addendum for CEZC, additional funding, and IDEA project activity plan from January 2019 to August 2019, in the amount of $5,339.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend discussion regarding youth core program 2018-19 Department of Labor and Workforce Development through the Vinland Public Schools in the amount of $400,000.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of the Wetlands Institute Environmental Education Field Trip Program for Manny's Elementary School, Wetlands Ecology Program, attendance for 96 students and six chaperones.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the Master Service Interlocal Contract between Education Service Center Region 19 Allied States Cooperative and the Vinland Board of Education, authorizing the use of the cooperative JMT Associates for Technology, hardware, software, and related goods and services.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the transportation contract between Millville Public Schools and the Vinland Board of Ed for two students in the amount of $30,600 from the date September 4, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the transportation contract between Pine Hill Board of Education and the Vinland Board of Education for one student in the amount of $5,209.50 from October 10, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding petty cash for the 2018-19 fiscal year for the Transportation Department to Michael Hall in the amount of $300.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the following Cumberland County Regional Cooperative Transportation Initiatives. 2018-19 transportation quoted contracts, transportation addendum, and student transportation services record and award.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend approval of items 4.1 through 4.9.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Abstain on 4.4B, yes on everything else.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
That's the end of my recommendations.
Do we have any questions or comments on bills that incurred for the month of December 2018? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Do we have any committee reports this evening?
Policy and personnel. Gene, you have one?
The only thing I have is we discussed what we voted on earlier in the committee, Max Leiter and Oak and Main.
Thank you.
All right, policy and personnel, tonight we met, present was Dr. Grucci, Dr. Rossi, Keith Solano, Scott Muscarrell, myself, Scott English, Megan Spinelli, and John Sabrana via telephone conference. So we covered a lot. There's 18 mandated policies that are either being modified in some regards, some being added because of state laws have changed. Mr. Franchipani, for the sake of not killing trees, will supply anybody with the link or if you need a printed copy, he will accommodate you. They will be on future board agenda for approval. So those policies, if you have any question regarding them, just see, you know, do a quick email, Dr. Grucci, if that's okay, write to John. And he'll get you those policy views, but those 18 that were looked at tonight. We're also making some minor bylaw changes to our board bylaws that govern meetings and committees, and corrected some of the language that needs to be in place now because of our combined means and such. And that is in the, will be in the review stage for final approval by Mr. DeSanto. We're also introducing a new bylaw, which will also be in our solicitor's hands, on the hiring of senior staff in the district and how that protocol will be laid out. And the board and the superintendent have come up with language that's got to be approved by Mr. DeSanto. We also discussed, and this will be presented at both the transportation and finance committees, discussed a proposal for a shared service agreement with the city of Vinland for vehicle maintenance of our school buses and such. And that's in the late planning stages, but needs approval by both the city solicitor for the city of Vinland and Mr. DeSanto. So when that is available, Mr. Solano will be scheduling appointments with both the finance committee and the transportation committee and laying out the costs, potential cost savings, to the district for that plan. So once that's done, we can get that, if the board is inclined, on the agenda, hopefully by March or April, would be the timeline, take advantage of that. We were told that there's going to be some personnel time split between the new stage director, so a couple of teachers involved in the cap and dagger productions will be splitting that duty and the stipend involved. Also, there was discussion that is on the agenda at 12 regarding a personnel freeze for hiring for the budget period that, you know, we're in. for hiring for the budget period that, you know, we're in, and I'll let Mr. English expand on that, but we did come up to an agreement, what we could do as far as the district goes, and the superintendent appears to be in agreement with that. And that covers it for the Policy and Personnel Committee.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Do we have any more committee reports?
I have a committee report. Curriculum Instruction Technology Committee met on January twenty-eighth. In addition to setting C I T meetings for the rest of the year, we discussed financial literacy being embedded into the social studies curriculum. We also discussed a potential policy for retakes as far as testing is concerned for students. There was a discussion regarding English as a second language, issues regarding the program. We also talked about having CTE course progression in areas, for example, mass media to studio production, video editing, which would then lead to other courses where a student would be able to obtain certification in certain areas while, before graduating. And that's about it? Anything else, Mr.?
Do I have any questions or comments? Yes.
You said financial literacy embedded in social studies?
Yes. And Mr. Frye, would you kind of elaborate?
I guess my question is, wouldn't that go under math curriculum?
Yeah, there's three curricula that support financial literacy, history, mathematics, and business. Either of those components can satisfy the social, the fin, financial literacy content standards.
I don't know, somehow or another, I always thought finance had to do with money, not with who the first president of the United States was.
But it's also macro and microeconomics. It's also items like organizing debt to resources and those kind of things as well. So it is, it satisfies all three of those areas.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it for committee reports. Thank you. Number twelve, I've had some board members ask me questions concerning possible hiring freezes, and we decided this evening it was on the agenda for policy personnel. The thought process behind this is, we're in the middle of a fourteen million dollar shortfall. There's a lot of things going on in the district. The thought process is not to slow down the district. If we need a calculus teacher, we have to hire a calculus teacher, but there could be other things that a board member sees on an agenda and might question, why is that on there? I had talked to some board members about, if we're doing a, if we talk about a hiring freeze, do we want to temporarily do a blanket one that covers the whole district? When we discussed it in our meeting, we were, we were told that there are some, some positions that we need that are noneducational, that could possibly be saving us money, combined with the shared service type thing. I wasn't that aware of the shared service. I had a little more knowledge given to me this evening, and we're going to also discuss it through two other committees, which will kind of help me understand, and then in turn help the rest of the board, if you're not really in line of where we were thinking. The thought process that we worked out with the committee is, when it comes to vetting these positions, it would, it would go to our Policy Personnel Committee and hear the logic of why this is a needed position. Four board members currently sit on that, and then we would, as the committee, we would take it out of committee and discuss it accordingly. I wanted to hear from each one of you, if you had any questions or concerns on this and wanted to add anything to it, we could also, we can add that to the kind of discussion we had today in our committee meeting. So any discussion on that? You kind of understand where I'm trying to go with this, or?
Mr. English?
Yes.
So are you planning on a timetable, say, for until we have the next budget set, or just indefinitely?
What I'd like to do is see, over the next three months, when we get through this budget process, to see where we're at, because we almost get right back into it again for the following year. So the days of positions being available in the Vineland Public School District are going to be questioned a lot more by board members, as well as when we go to central administration, we cannot run the day-to-day operation, but we definitely can ask questions on why this is needed, and how does it benefit future budgets, how does it benefit the classroom, et cetera. So it's, it's in that three-month timetable, but I just think it's a good practice, just really moving forward when you're looking at these giant budget numbers, so, thank you.
And one last question, did you discuss with Dr. Rossi any impacts it would have?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and he, he shared his concerns, and they're actually, we have, we have pretty much in the minutes, so, yes, absolutely. He, he brings some points to me. The goal is not to shut down the daily operations of the district, but at the same time, if the thought process is we have to do more with less, then it needs to share the load across the district, not just with various things, okay?
Like, just like to add, for the board members that weren't there, is that when we discussed this, we had a very collaborative discussion with Dr. Gucchio and, and Dr. Rossi, really looking at how there could be a ripple effect on some positions, how other positions could actually save us money, and, you know, all this is going to go into, you know, short timetables and projected out projections, and then looking at those projections and see if we made the right decision. So I, I really think that tonight, we did, made a lot of headway, and, you know, I, I feel confident that based upon what was discussed tonight, that the district is being, administration is being carefully prudent, and we, as the board, are exercising our duties to look at the students and taxpayers.
And, and just because these come out of the committee, you as board members, you have your personal opinion on what you think, and during our discussion at these combined meetings, you might bring something to our attention that we totally missed, and at that point, like we had talked last month, that might be something that we say, okay, let's pull that back from the agenda and readdress it. So the, the goal is to just trying to get it more efficient and see where we end up with, we understand this budget, but I'm already thinking about the next one, okay? Mr. Medio?
That, that's exactly what I was going to say. Mr. Fiocchi, you said something over the next three months. It's not the next three months, it's at least the next year or more. If you remember, a year ago at this meeting, I think I said that we were facing a projected ten million dollar shortfall. I was a little bit sure it was fourteen million. Next year, we're going to be facing probably something in the range of eight to nine million in the superintendent's budget, if nothing else changes. So somewhere along the line, this board and superintendent are going to have to look at making some kind of cuts to address these shortfalls.
Absolutely. Dr. Gucchio, do you have anything you want to share on that? Does anyone else have any discussion on this? No? Okay. We have no emergent items. At this time, opportunity for the public to address the board on any item, and please limit your comments to five minutes.
Madam Superintendent, for President Board Members, as some of you may or may not know, we're here to observe Robert's Rule of Orders. Our local chapter of Skills USA, their offices are in attendance, and we've seen it used, but I just have one question that might clarify for my students. In all of your roll calls, you had a positive outcome, or major vote of yes. In the event of a structured meeting where the, there's a dissension vote, where there's a majority where there's not a favorable outcome, what's the course of action then, so that these kids can better understand that?
We can exchange in dialogue, according to our bylaws, but we will discuss that with you after the meeting, absolutely.
Okay, I'll stick around, they're going to have to go, but I'll bring that information back to them. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. And thank you for bringing the students up. Okay. Yes, you can. Mr. DeSanto can talk to you now, that's, thank you. Do we have anyone else this evening? Come on up, you can come to the podium.
All right, if I, if I'm understanding correctly, are you saying?
You have to come to the podium and just tell us your name, please.
Hi, my name's LaVina Scape, I'm with the Board Education with Cafeteria Service, and I was listening to what you're saying, but I just want to know, are you kind of saying that food service, we don't have to worry about our jobs for the next year, when you were talking about the cuts?
We cannot exchange in dialogue, according to our bylaws and Robert's rules here. I can tell you, in the near future, we will be having our budget meeting.
Can you tell me when that will be happening?
We really can't exchange in that dialogue, but after the meeting, if you want to stay, I can have that discussion with you. Okay? Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Okay. Do we have any old or new business? I just want to just give you a quick, I'm going to call it old business, simply because we're getting ready to have our February twentieth board retreat, and I sent an email out, but I just, I need, I need to have some substance from my board members concerning some items. I have no problem setting the agenda, but I want to give everyone an opportunity to be part of what's being on that agenda, as well as thinking of some district goals. If you can reach out to me with like three to five items for board discussion, and not the generic student achievement, things like that, something a little more robust, and the same with some board goals, because, as you know, we need them as well. And then, under new business, Jean and myself have, have worked together, she's worked together, and actually, we're going to try and do a board district calendar on our website that will be through the Google Docs, which I learned is a really great tool. It's important that, if we can get the, the principals and the teachers that invited to the events to use the Google Doc format, it's one less tree that we have to kill, and I believe it's a good way that we, as board members, can go on that site, see the calendar. Mr. Medio could say, hey, Scott's going on that event, great, I'll, I'll head to another.
Budget has impacted everyone across the board in some way, so please try to understand the, the work and the effort that's been put into it, and understand that none of us are happy about many of the things that are in there, but fourteen million dollars is not a small number, and we've done the best we can keeping our students first in, in mind as we work through it. Thank you.
Mr. Muscarrel, if you can just give me a clarification, I know that we had some meeting dates for the budget meeting things, are we still on schedule with them dates, or did they change? I don't, I don't know if my fellow board members know that as well, because I know our schedules are, we booked our schedules for the year, but?
Yeah, the meetings will change, because the governor has postponed his speech. Nothing's been made public yet.
Okay.
We're expecting that to happen, so we'll be, that information will be coming forward soon.
I believe, Ressini, did send an email out to board members, so our regular March meeting will be March sixth, and the following week will be the budget meeting, unless something changes with the governor's address.
And the ultimate goal for me, with, with the magnitude of this, if indeed one or two board members cannot make that, are we okay with switching that date to a different day? Because I think the, I want the entire board here for that discussion.
As long as we have enough time to post, you know, and advertise, okay?
Okay. All righty. We pretty much covered everything tonight. I, I do want to thank the cafeteria staff for coming out, because you guys usually hear that people are rowing out of control, but we feel that we were respected and vice versa. The, the feelings are definitely mutual here. So I can, I can tell you, like I told you before, that we will, we will do the best to keep everyone abreast of what's going on moving forward, and I have nothing else this evening, so do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you, and have a good night.